Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath is absent. Joseph Kozinski.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And our presentation regarding the K-9 protective vests is going to be rescheduled for another date. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I move to approve the Order of Business, June 13th, 2017, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 23rd, 2017 meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Move the council approve of the minutes of May 23rd, 2017, as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. All those in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item five, public hearings and comment on agenda items. Any comments from anyone on items pending on the agenda? Come up to the podium, state your name and the street you live on.
Good evening. Zuhair Abdalha, 354 Rosemary. I saw in the packet there is $80,000 for due diligence on the golf course. I would like to know what this $80,000 is going to be spent on? And do we have any plan to develop that property? And this is set amount, or we're going to have an open end?
Mr. Abdalha, this procedure of speaking before the meeting is still in its infancy, and the idea is for the public to comment on their viewpoint on agenda items. And then if you... I understand your question.
I believe this is going to be on the agenda.
Right. But it's... We're not set up to do question and answer at this point. Right.
I mean, this is an agenda item, and I'm just asking a question about...
If you want.
If you don't want to answer it, I'll wait until then. That's no problem.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
What I believe Council Chair Constant is saying is that, at the beginning, when we adopted this resolution to allow people to speak before on agenda items only, it was for people to speak their mind about the agenda, and that it's not a question thing where we answer questions. That was going to be done later. It's just to give us food for thought on how we vote, and what your opinions are.
And I understand your... The point you're possibly making, which is, is this going to be all there is, or is it going to go up? We understand that. But we can't enter a discussion about that now.
I'm not entering into discussion. I'm asking a question. You're going to vote on something to spend money. Maybe I have something to say, maybe change some of your minds.
And that's the intent of this session, is to let you...
Mr. Chairman, you want me to wait until the end of the night? I can.
Well, yeah, let me say this. I understand your concern, and when we... That item comes up, we'll hopefully address that.
I mean, after you vote, it doesn't matter if I speak or I don't.
Right.
Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. In regards to the Warren Valley Golf Course.
Just state your name and the street.
Deb Brown, England, Silver Lane. I agree with the purchase, okay, which is probably one thing that we never agree on, but this is one thing I do agree with you on, to save that space. My concern is, is I thought that we all had an agreement that prior to a vote on any purchase, that we would have a study session in which all of the information will be given to the residents so that we would also be informed on what to do, so that when we could contact you and give our opinions. And then I look at the agenda, and I see an eight-page agreement, which is really only one page, and the other seven pages weren't even given to council until today, from what I understand. That's a concern, because I thought that we all agree, and I do believe the mayor said that, that we would have a study session to bring that out in the open with all the details. We understand that it's a $1.8 million purchase agreement, but there's so many other unanswered questions. If you look at just page one, there's a question that I have. What is considered fixtures, and what is considered property? What are those things? And, I mean, I wish that we could also get the opportunity to see the other seven pages. And I do believe that the council made a promise to us to not vote in a hurry, that they would take their time. You've all had closed sessions today, so we have no idea what the information is. We're in the dark, other than the purchase price.
We're talking about two different things. This is the offer to purchase, the offer we're going to make to the county. The closing and the actual purchase will come later.
Well, I understand, but there's an agreement where we only see one page of eight. So I can't give my opinion on something when I don't know the other seven pages, other than what Mr. Miyaki just told me, that we are purchasing parcels one and two, and leasing parcel three. That was information given to me.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Please.
The council had, and in fact, we had a closed session with the county representatives. I was asked to put the item on as a placeholder. So, we only used the first page, because I thought in between we'd get a new agreement. There's no willingness to hide or anything of that sort. The final decision will come with the payment of the $1.8 million, and that will be later in the year. But we still have due diligence that needs to be done. And in fact, the previous speaker's question, the $80,000, because it's so much property, it has to be surveyed, and we have to know exactly what it is we're purchasing.
Correct.
So, really, this is... There's been a passage of an attempt that allowed me to send a letter to the county executive that we are interested in purchasing it. We now, and Mr. Miyaki, correct me if I'm wrong, but are saying that our intent to purchase is still there, but it's conditional. And in that... And there's many conditions...
If I can just correct. Essentially, what we're saying is, we're approving the purchase. However, it's subject to a due diligence period, during which time the city would be able to conduct activities to purchase the property if the... If the city is in a position where it decides that it's not going to be suitable, for whatever reason, the city has the option to tell the county, "Sorry, no thanks. We want our deposit back, and there's no problem," and they get copies of all of our due diligence materials, because we are the ones who bear all of that cost. But I think this should be looked at as that we are very serious in terms of the purchase, but it's still subject to the idea that if we look at everything and say, "Jesus, this is just not going to work for us." So, it's a little difference, I think, in how I would phrase it.
It's standard with any purchase of any commercial property.
And I'm not disputing that it is. It's just that the residents want to know the other seven pages. I think it's our right to know the other seven pages, whether... And I think we all agreed, and I think you guys all agreed, that there would not be a vote until that study session, and it wouldn't be like the garbage thing all over again when we're going to vote today, and we just got the information today.
Right. We got you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Bill Craig. I live at 20050 Milburn in Livonia. I'm speaking as a Wayne County resident. And I would guess it's Agenda Item Eight, the Warren Valley Golf Course. I am very disappointed with Executive Evans for his unsound proposal to sell Wayne County Parks' property, period, for whatever reason.
Sir, this would probably be more appropriate at the end.
Oh, okay.
This is for... This is for us to... On agenda items.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, I'll just start it, and then... I am very disappointed with some of the members of Wayne County Commission for not declaring united opposition to sale of Wayne County Parks' property. Many, many have supported a millage that has provided over $100 million to save Wayne County Parks. Executive Evans disregards these citizens to sell prime Wayne County Parks' property. I am not disappointed with Dearborn Heights for taking on the cause to purchase this property to keep it from destruction. What Executive Evans did was wrong. Thank you for doing the right thing. So, I hope that brings it back into focus. Thank you.
We'll communicate that to them.
Suzanne Todd, Academy Street. That agreement that we only received one page of says "purchase agreement." We did not see the other seven pages. We have no idea what the other seven pages say. How can... How can we... How can we make a decision on how we feel about this if we don't have all the facts? A purchase agreement is a purchase agreement, and personally, I think it's bull that you say, "Oh, we sign it. We can always go back on it." I want to see the other seven pages. And I understand that the other seven pages weren't provided to our council members until 5:00 this afternoon. Our council members. This is not right. Not right. I'm not against purchasing the Warren Valley Golf Course if it's going to prevent people in the north from going through what we in the south have been, the hell we've been going through. However, I think all of us need to know exactly. And voting, I just found this out tonight, and that the council just received the other seven pages at 5:00. How do you expect them to vote on something they received three hours ago?
I don't think we received it at 5:00, but...
Email.
We understand your point.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Substantively, this hasn't changed much from the document that I sent to the council back in May. Essentially, there have just been some tweaks, and the main change has been with respect to parcel A becoming a lease as opposed to a purchase. And so, there's an additional document. There is the long-term lease with regard to parcel A. But none of this is... And the council's been informed with regard to this.
So, how can they vote on something they don't know?
No. This sounds like, some of the people are honest, that they don't want us to vote, and we're under a time deadline. That's what it sounds like to me. I mean, the agreement is here. Somebody got up and said, "We don't know what's fixtures and what's not." Well, that's not... It's the council has it. We're...
No, 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 no. The council has it. The people deserve the right to see the purchase agreement, period. You can do all your lawyer speak. You can too, but unless I see it in writing, I'm not going to believe you.
They'll get a copy of it later.
And by the way, they're fully entitled to it. If we had had it, we would have ended up providing it sooner. But Mr. Brown and I were negotiating this afternoon, up to the sound.
And I didn't... I got it the same time the council got it. So, it wasn't sitting around. I will... Maybe I'm wrong in saying this, but I want to say it. All of you that were here last Tuesday, I want to thank you for your input. You helped negotiate some changes that got incorporated in this agreement that made it a better agreement. And so, the council was very much involved in the negotiations of this agreement and strengthened it. And thank you for your efforts.
Please, if you've had the chance to speak, you don't have to shout from the middle of the room.
I'll shout if I want to, Constant. I'm tired of your crap.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. The next item on the agenda is Item Six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve current claim six-one, verse 638.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Any comments, questions? They're all fine, mind. All right. It's been moved and supported to...
Mr. Chair, one time.
Councilman Muscat.
I don't know if this falls under this current claims, but a week ago... Never mind. I'll mention this at the end of the session. So, excuse me. I'm sorry.
All those in favor of the motion, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 7A, consideration of bids, advertisement for bids, replacement of Salt Dome.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council concur the request of Bill Zimmer to advertise for the appropriate bids for the replacement of Salt Dome in the DPW yard.
Second. Second by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 8A, report from the mayor, Warren Valley Golf Course purchase.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Move City Council concur and approve the purchase agreement of the Warren Valley Golf Course as outlined in 8A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
If I may, suggest that you also approve the Warren Valley Golf Course parcel-three lease agreement as well.
So, move.
Mr. ...
Is the support okay with this?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Mr. Chairman, based on the residents, the concerns for the community, in particular with flooding and development, and with Warren Valley Golf Course, the... I'd like to see language added to the agreement to restrict development on this property. This is, you know, I wrote a resolution opposing any development. That language is not included in this agreement. And I know there's many residents here for that reason. They want to see it protected. They don't want to see it developed. Without that language, there's not a guarantee on anything to anybody, what's going to happen with that property.
Yeah. So, we'll have Counselor Miyaki chime in, but I don't think that would be the language that we would put in the purchase agreement.
No, it would not be. The purchase agreement would be designed for our obligations with respect to the county, and the county's obligations with respect to us. After we have the property, we can end up having some sort of motion, or resolution, or ordinance that would restrict the city's use with regard to the property, if that's what the council decided was appropriate.
But even then, no matter which direction we go, it'd still have to be voted on at that particular point anyways. So, in other words, if we purchased this property, and two years from now, we decide to do X, Y, or Z, either way, the council would have to vote on it.
That is correct.
So, we can't put a restriction right now on this.
Not in a purchase agreement. Purchase agreement doesn't pertain to the county.
This is a purchase agreement between the county and us. So, we can't put a restriction on us while we're buying it. So, it's like somebody purchasing a home. You can't purchase a home with somebody and put a restriction on yourself as a buyer.
Well, you could, but why would you?
It wouldn't make sense. It would work against yourself. You'd restrict yourself.
Right. I mean, if... That should be something that would be thought through more after you have the property, or while you're in the process of going through the due diligence, that you make decisions with respect to how you want to proceed.
So, it's through the due diligence phase of this where we'll be able to hash all that out. But as far as the initial agreement is concerned, that agreement takes place between us and the county to purchase it. Any land use is something to be determined as we go through the due diligence.
But the only one that can make... Well, I shouldn't say the only one. The one that would realistically make a condition on land use would probably be the county, not us. You wouldn't want to put a... It wouldn't make sense to me for us to put a restriction on ourselves, from an economic standpoint, and say what we can or can't use it for right now.
Well, that would have to be discussed.
Right.
But not in this agreement.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
You know, we had a closed session, and I don't know how much I can say or can't say. But with... In regards of the lease agreement for the one specific plot on the golf course, I'd like to know if the original developer had to give that up too, okay, number one, because we're purchasing a golf course, and to me, that's part of a golf course. And what special use does the county really have to have for that one little piece that's landlocked? I don't understand. I know there's some sort of park on the other side of it, but why would you want not to buy that spot that's got the two holes on it? So, you know, I'd like to know if the original developer, who came forward and said he wanted to buy it, was he going to have to give that up too? And if he was, then it's okay. But if he wasn't, then why should we give it up?
If I may. The legal description was not contained in the original Hillcrest agreement. So, I don't think they ran into the issue with regard to the actual property that was going to be conveyed. If you recall, this property, we were looking at parcels one, two, and three. After we received it, we communicated to the county after talking to Dan Brooks and to Chrissy. It was raised, "Hey, wait a second. This is a lot more property than we might really want." I raised that issue with the county. The county ended up looking into it further and saying, "You know what? That's correct. We wouldn't want to end up giving you, nor would you probably want portions that are, you know, basically Heinz Drive and Heinz Park." So, I think the county would have never given Hillcrest that opportunity, once they ended up putting together paperwork that was sufficiently clear with regard to the legal description. The only reason we got to that point was because we got to that point in the negotiations, and looked at parcel one, two, and three, and said, "Wait a second. This seems to be more than we need for a golf course. Should we change it?" And that's the way this agreement is written at this time. As a matter of fact, I'm expecting that we will have to come back before we would end up doing any sort of closing, and have the council approve a bring-down certificate that essentially says all the conditions have been met. But most importantly, to confirm the legal after we have full confirmation of the legal. And I just... Mr. Hall and Mr. Brown from the county have both nodded that they think that that would be where we'd be looking at things as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I mean, if I may, you know, I still have concerns, and it's about protecting the interests of the community. And I think Dearborn Heights should take a measured look at acquiring the property. And my concerns are with the transparency, or the lack of transparency. There has not been a public hearing or input for our residents, as we had been told we would have. I know Councilman Abdullah had asked, and I had asked previously as well. And I would like to see language restricting any future development. And I do believe it can be included in a purchase agreement, as I had been told. But I understand that's not going to be discussed, and that friendly amendment I made will die.
But, yeah, that's...
Okay. So, but I do feel as stewards of taxpayers' dollars, we're representatives for our taxpayers' voices. And I think there's still serious concern with moving forward. Where's the vision? Where's the plan? We haven't had discussion. We haven't publicly discussed the costs that are involved. And of course, you know, we want to do what's responsible for our residents, prevent flooding, obviously. It's a flood plain. But I want there to be something built in to do exactly that, because that has not been included in this agreement. And up until now, there's still questions that aren't answered. I still have some concerns. I know you say we're going to do it later. I'd rather see it up front, to protect everyone, our entire community, because our entire community will be impacted by this decision we make tonight. So, I'm going to tell you, at this point, in good conscience, I can't vote yes for this. Not that I don't want to protect you, but what I want to do is make sure I'm a steward of your tax dollars, and do what's right for our community.
Yeah.
Councilor Miyaki.
Yeah. You know what? And one other thing that I think should be included in the motion would be that there will be... That we pay the... Or authorize the payment of the 10% deposit of $180,000, just to make sure that that's clear in the motion as well. Even though it's clear in the purchase agreement, I think we should probably, for purposes of transparency, make sure that we include that as well.
Include that into the motion, the one... The purchase of 1.8 million?
Well, yes, and the deposit.
Payment of the deposit.
The payment of the deposit.
Amount of $180,000.
So, move.
And support.
I need a support from...
Yeah. If you could repeat that one more time.
Can we have the full motion at one time, please?
Move City Council concur and approve the purchase agreement of the Warren Valley Golf Course as outlined in 8A, and approve the purchase agreement price of 1.8 million plus the... Was it the deposit, counselor?
Deposit of $180,000.
Deposit of $180,000?
And in addition, approve the lease for the portion of parcel-three involved.
In addition, approve the lease of parcel-three that's involved.
Support.
Support.
Mr. Chair.
Further discussion?
One more.
Mr. Chairman, that was all a part of the original motion that Councilman Berry put up, and it was already supported.
Yeah, just so our clerk could get the whole motion all at once.
Yeah, because they outlined it as an 8A, and it's all in the...
Correct.
It's all in the agreement here.
There was a motion, and supported. I supported that original motion.
Right. Right.
Otherwise, you would have to make adjustments to the original motion by virtue of some tactics taken at the table here, as opposed to the single resolution that Councilman Berry put out, and I supported. So, it's all in place.
Right. Mr. Chair, I just want to mention one more thing. You know, I lost a lot of sleep over this, and I've had paperwork spewed all over my dining room table for a week here, and asking questions to myself. This impacts our entire city for, it could be decades, and not only financially, but environmentally, depending on what we say and do here. The only thing is, is, like I said, we had a closed meeting, and I did have a document here in a closed meeting about due diligence, and surveys, and environmental. And I'm not sure what the total cost of all of that is yet. And it just... I just have a hard time saying yes to a blank check. And that's why I look at it. It's like a blank check, and I have a hard time doing that. And it just...
Mr. Chair.
I don't know what else to say to the residents, is when it comes up to vote, I'm going to vote. I still don't know when I'm going to vote, but I will vote.
Councilman Berry.
Yeah, I think during that... I'm sure during that closed session, all those questions were asked as far as the survey, and the Phase One and Phase Two of environmentals, if in fact that that was needed. We did get, or we did hear what those costs were going to be. You know, I understand how some of the council people may feel a little apprehensive about voting on this purchase agreement here. But understand that this is the first step in many steps that have to take place in order for us to make a final decision. So, you have not signed on a dotted line. What we are doing is doing exactly what the majority of the residents, if not all of them, would expect us to do, is first of all, don't turn a blind eye to this, because this is a great opportunity. But now, let's move forward and do our due diligence, and do it right, and have the transparency. Not that there hasn't been, but let's set up those dates where we can have those town hall meetings, or sessions here, where people can come in and voice their opinion. So, I understand your apprehension, but just the same, we need to act on it. That's where I stand.
And also, Mr. Chair.
Councilman...
Also, just to clarify, when you purchase something with due diligence, you haven't completely purchased it. There's no closing yet. We don't own it. As a matter of fact, we just give a deposit at this particular point, and we're saying that... that we have good intent to purchase it, so long as everything clears, you know, in the end clears up to, to the angle that we would like. So, if we go into this thing, start doing due diligence, and we find out this is not going to be compatible with what our vision is for the city, then at that particular point, we could very clearly cancel this thing and get our deposit back, but at that point, we've lost out on whatever we've put out as far as doing the due diligence. So, it's still not a done deal yet, but I want to, I want to clarify a couple of things from the comments that were said earlier by a couple of residents. We do have a deadline here with the county to make this decision, so it's not like we have the opportunity to be able to drag this thing out for another month or two or three. We would like to if we could, but that's not an option for us, given by the county, because they've given us, I think, a good six months now roughly for the, when this thing originally started. So, there is an option for us. The other thing is, if we don't do this, we have to keep in mind, you know, when we vote, that the county, I mean, they have other options too. They could sell it to developer, and that's what, something that some of the residents said they don't want, or they could just practically leave it alone, and that's something that we definitely don't want. So, we got to keep that in mind when we're moving forward with this thing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Abdullah, for kind of wrapping that up. That's where this is at. County came and said, we haven't been able to operate this golf course at a profit. We want to, we're going to sell it. So, instead of it being sold, just listed with a broker and sold, the city said, we're going to buy it. We're going through the steps, the complicated many steps to do that. Okay? So, I'm hearing now, people are saying, well, you know, I, I'm not going to vote for this. We, we don't have that luxury to, to talk about it for six months.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Thank you. And I agree, Councilman Abdullah, there's been six months, and so now we're having this discussion about public hearing, which is plenty of time where we should have already had the public hearing for input from our residents, as we're spending your taxpayers' dollars. I guess what I'm looking for is some reassurance on vision. What, I mean, I want to hear from somebody, some intent here, because I've heard so many stories, we all have, where a school board has told one thing, somebody else has told another thing.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I want some intent.
All right. We are, we're voting on the purchase agreement.
I understand. Residents have a right to know, and this could be at least discussed.
Okay.
Well, I, I have no problem, I don't know about you guys, but obviously we have to agree to this, but I have no problem seeing what the intent is.
We want, the residents have a right to know intent.
Well, I put it in writing.
I mean, because it was done in a closed session, so I don't, I don't want to blurt it out unless the council.
I, I gave a, I gave a, a write-up of everything.
Right.
That I knew about, every cost and everything last week.
Right, correct.
And I said that the reason I was proposing this was that it remain a golf course and a banquet center.
Okay, so there it is.
There it is.
I mean, not that he said it. The intent is, at this particular point with the cities, to keep it as a golf course and go out and put out RFPs to get a managing company to run it as a golf course. At this point, that's the intent, so.
And I think the other thing you can say regardless of whatever ends up happening is that if the property was otherwise to be developed, it would potentially no longer be able to be as effective as a green space and a flood plain. And I think that that in and of itself is a, a very important, sufficient reason to justify this purchase.
I, I remember Commissioner Webb stating, it's, you know, an analogy is Central Park in New York. I mean, that property could be sold for millions of dollars, but if it would, it would destroy a beautiful park in an otherwise dense city. So, you know, is everything perfect? No, but to now say, just before we're going to vote on it, well, no, let's vote no, because I, I'm not going to do that.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, through the chair, thank you, Mayor. That's what I was wanting, and it wasn't for my benefit, because we were here in closed session. It was for the residents' benefit that wasn't. So, thank you.
I think we're in unison now.
Okay. Thank you.
Call the vote.
Anyway, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Great.
The next item on the agenda, item 8B, from Mayor Pletko, Warren Valley Golf Course Survey.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Before there's a, a motion, and I noticed that Mr. Brooks arrived, and there was a question earlier, is this the 80,000? Mr. Brooks, could you outline, because I'm, I thought this would most likely be the 80,000, that we don't expect it to go higher, but we want to make sure that what we're buying is what we're buying, and that constitutes the need for a survey.
Correct. The, the purchase agreement, there's a need for an ALTA survey for the, the three properties.
Dan, if you'll mind, I'm just going to interrupt for a second.
Yeah.
So, I've had a lot of calls on, you know, some people ask me on this. I just want to clarify for some of the residents. An ALTA survey is not like your traditional survey that you'd see on a home or a mortgage, otherwise known as a mortgage survey. So, and he's going to go into the details, but I just want to clarify that, because I've had some people ask me, why is it so high as compared to a mortgage survey?
Correct.
Which would be three to four to five to $600. This is totally different from that, although it has the same name.
Right.
It's a totally different product.
Well, that's a good point. With, with platted land and somebody's buying a house, and there's, this is a lot.
About $400.
This is, this is, was a, a public park, it's a lot more land and a lot more complicated.
Correct. You, you, basically, you do have to start getting, you obtain a title search, title work, recorded easement, that all has to be requested through a title company. With the size of the properties, that cost is probably $45,000. All right, it's typically something, that's something the city has to spend, and that's used as information to create, you know, out there in the survey, establish the boundaries and so forth. We need to prepare documents with the, there's three properties. Now, with the easement, or the, the lease agreement, it may change how the properties come together, but there, to go through and prepare documents to split and combine the properties, that's about a $10,000 to $12,000 cost, all right? And then we, there's a request to prepare easements for the three interceptors that traverse the golf course, and that cost is roughly $10,000. The actual performance of the boundary survey with the surveyors out there establishing the boundary of the three properties, and then doing the ALTA survey, which is picking, basically, you're, you're creating a picture of the golf course to a certain degree. You're not, you're not doing topographic survey, but you're, you're locating all the structures, all the important features, and there's a checklist that we follow. And that, it's up to about $50,000 for that particular three parcels. And then we have, we've got, we've got a couple thousand dollars just for meetings with the city and the county, you know, through this process. So, now with the lease agreement, there may be less survey work to be done, so that the cost could come down. So, it, this, this will cover everything, and based on our rate schedule, it's time material. So, if we go out there and we only spend 60, 70,000, that's how we spend. We're not, it's not a lump sum price.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Before you came, there was a question, I thought.
Right.
The expanded role would be informational for everybody. Sorry.
Councilman Berry.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion. Are you okay with that? Move City Council concur and authorize Roy Wade Trim to complete the ALTA survey for a cost, for the city of Dearborn Heights at a cost not to exceed $80,000 on the proposed Warren Valley property, as outlined in 8B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I guess this question would be to Mr. Brooks. Now, I know you mentioned the lease agreement there with the small little piece of property within parcel three, but why would you have to do all of parcel three when we're not buying it?
Well, that, that's what we need to clarify. Okay? We may still need to do a boundary on parcel three, so we can carve out that portion of the golf course.
Okay, so you're going to, you're going to shoot the whole area to find exactly where that's at?
Well, it's more of a boundary, not an ALTA. You know, you, you have to do a boundary survey to start the ALTA process.
Okay. Thank you. I, I've just, for the record there.
I also want to clarify, this is something that would take roughly about 60 days to do, as opposed to a mortgage survey, which could be done in a day or two. So, I just want to clarify that. This is a much bigger project than, and, and, and I also want to clarify, for, for our due diligence on the property, this is just one of other things that will be done as far as due diligence is concerned. It's not going to be the only thing.
Any further discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And 8A was, the vote was 7-0, correct? Because I.
Six.
Six, there's one absent. Yeah. The next item on the agenda, item 9A, from Treasurer O'Reilly, inter fund loans.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Move City Council authorize Treasurer O'Reilly to enact the inter fund loan as needed at an interest rate of 1.1% per annum, as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So, that's five yeses and one no. The next item on the agenda, item 9B, from Proporation Council Miatki, 24600 Vanborn Road Telecommunications Facility Lease Agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I move council approve the reinstatement and ratification of the First Amendment to telecommunications facility landlord slash tenant agreement between a city and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC and memorandum of agreements also between a city and New Singular Wireless PCS, subject to further changes to, to those documents as required by Corporate, Proporation Council Miatki. Further, the Mayor Pletko and City Clerk Percevage are to authorize and execute these documents on behalf of the city, as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9C, from Fire Chief Dave Brogan, AFG Fire Prevention Grant, purchase of HP tablets with protective covers.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I move council concur with Chief Brogan in purchase of the six HP Elite X2 tablets, $900 each, total of $5,400. Protective covers for the tablets at $42 each, total of $252. The total cost of these items is $5,652. The city share being $565 to come from capital outlay payable upon receipt.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9D, from Fire Chief Dave Brogan, AFG Fire Prevention Grant, purchase of Bullseye Digital Fire Extinguishing Training System and Hazard Kitchen Simulator. Councilwoman Clayton.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Fire Chief David Brogan's request to purchase the Bullseye Digital Fire Extinguishing Training System, $10,725. Hazard Kitchen Simulator, $3,780. This is an AFG grant. The total cost is $14,505. The city share is $1,405, excuse me, $1,450, to come from capital outlay payable upon receipt, as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9E, from Fire Chief, from Police Chief Lee Gavin, purchase of modems for police cars.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Move council concur with Chief Gavin's request for the purchase of the modems indicated in item 9F.
Support.
I need, support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9F, from Police Chief Gavin, purchase of ammunition.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I move to approve Police Chief Lee Gavin's request for ammunition, as outlined in 9F.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Police Chief Lee Gavin, purchase of portable radios.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Move council concur with the request of Police Chief Gavin for the purchase of modems, the portable type, and the expense of about $125,200.45.
Twenty dollars.
All defined in 9G.
Clarify, $125, and $125,020.45.
Yes.
Thank you. Second by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9H, from our Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, equipment disposal.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I move council concur with Director Bill Zimmer in a scrapping of one Hustler lawnmower that was destroyed by a fire and has also been, since been replaced. All components that could be used are, have been, have been removed from that machine, as outlined in 9H.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, purchase of copier for Water Department.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the council concur with the request of Bill Zimmer for the purchase of a printer from Konica Minolta. The approximate cost is $4,808, all defined in item 9I.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
You know, I'm, I'm not saying to say no to this, I just got to quit. Have we ever, you know, just for all copiers in general, have we ever tried to think about a lease space for all our copiers, instead of purchasing them all, so we can kind of keep up with these? Is that cheaper to own them, or?
Yes, we do, we do them at fault each time we go to purchase, and this way it's cheaper to have, at least break certain.
Okay, I, I just, I know Ford leases all of their copiers. Everything is leased.
Often, if, like, at the state, when the technology changes.
Well, I, I understand it, because that's.
The lease is a better, but, you know, that's for our treasurer and the mayor's office and everyone to determine.
Okay, I just, just curious if anybody looked at it yet, that's all.
Any further discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from our Public Service Director Bill Zimmer, purchase of copier for Water Department.
I did that one, you're on 9A.
Road repairs in Lewis Manor subdivision.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Move council concur with the request of Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer and authorize the temporary repair of the road in the, Road or Street in the Lewis Manor subdivision, in, to an extent of $50,000 of expenditure, all defined in 9J.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
What, what work is going to get done? Is it just going to be along the curbs or how is that going to work? I mean, it'd be pretty cheap, $50,000.
Yes, and we can only do $33,000 worth. We had met, Dan and I had met with the mayor and plant Moran, we're trying to put together our, our road budget for the coming year, and we realized that that subdivision is in pretty sad shape. But unfortunately, the cost to do the whole subdivision in a single year isn't possible. So what we'd like to do is make some temporary repairs on the portion that won't be, we're hoping to get some work, you know, the one half of the subdivision done yet this year.
Is it, that's just, we're just talking about one street now, not, you know?
No, there, there's several streets in there. A lot of those streets are real bad repairing, but like you said, along the curb is, is some of the, some of the worst. We, we made an attempt to send our crews in there and do some patching, but with that H, with the UPM coal patches, it's not a good enough process. So the hot patch, the HMA stuff that we're proposing now would be a more permanent fix and hopefully last through the winter and get us to the point where we can get the other half of the subdivision done.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify, I think you said you were going to do $33,000 worth. You meant 33 square-
Yeah, 33,000 square feet is pretty much what that, what the budget will cover.
Right, right, thank you.
And this is way overdue and-
Yes.
We wish we could have done it all, but I, I've talked to some of the residents in there and I assured them over the next couple of years, I believe we can get this repaired.
Right. Also, Bill, I just want to address something, I know it's not on the agenda right now, but we had heard different comments from residents that there was not enough street sweeping, but I for myself, I'm starting to see more and more throughout the different streets that I travel in, so thank you for serving the city.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Just a follow-up question. This is the part of Fairwood between Haas and Ford, correct? That part of the subdivision? Is it the same one? I sent you some pictures, I know that, because that is really a, a bad area. Do you have a timeline from start to completion?
Of the temporary?
Yeah, of, yes.
We're hoping to get it done before the end of the budget year, which is the end of this month.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from our Human Service Director Elizabeth Sabota Perry, Medical Expense Reimbursement Trust Documents.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I've got the impression from this document that it's got to be referred to Corporation Council for a final review.
That, that's correct, although I've done a preliminary review and I don't think it's going to take me long to do a final review.
Shall go forward with the authorization for the mayor to sign the document.
Subject to the final-
Just as stated in the document here, I expect that I'll actually look at this tomorrow.
All right. So move, Mr. Chairman, subject to the final review of Corporation Council-
Second.
To approve this agreement and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign documents upon the appropriate authorization.
Second.
Second by Councilman Berry, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 11A from Corporation Council, Gary Miatki, First Reading of Proposed Ordinance H-17-03, 20th District Court Employees Early Retirement Program.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move council authorize a consideration for this ordinance to be read for the first time related to early retirement of some 20th District Court employees.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton, any discussion?
Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I do believe we've done a couple of these already. And every time we do them, we're always saying, how many more are we going to do? We say, oh, this is going to be it, this is going to be it. And here we are, doing it again. I don't know where everybody else worked, but wherever I worked, you either put your time in and you retired, or you didn't put your time in and still retired at, at your reduced rate of when you're going to retire if you don't have all your time in. Now, I had my choice to retire at 10, 12, 15, 20, 25 years. I chose to stay the full length plus then, so I get a little bit extra. But those who decided to retire at 25 only got 25 years worth. Why should this be any different than any, for anybody else? We keep doing this time and time and time again, and I don't know when it's going to stop. Pretty soon, we'll have everybody in the city wanting to retire early. That's my thought on this.
Councilman Miatki.
Yeah, in terms of the business or policy issues, that's not what I would address. I mean, I would note for, for the record that part of this is based on the idea of an agreement that this body previously had approved between the city and the Police Officers Association of Michigan, which is the court union, and that with respect to those union employees, regardless of whether or not this ordinance would be adopted, it will, that will go through. The biggest reason for those employees that I like to have these agreements memorialize things is because the city was involved in some litigation several years ago where people were trying to say that, or some retirees were trying to say that the city was going to owe certain money that the city believed that did not owe and would have cost the city $100,000 extra per year until all of these people passed away. Fortunately, we prevailed, but I like these ordinances as a prophylactic measure to make sure we don't have claims 20 years from now when no one knows what's going on. There's only one employee, as I understand it, who would be potentially taking advantage of this program who is a non, a non-bargaining unit employee. So that would be the only individual who would end up being affected. The only other thing that I would note is that based on how we had done this several years ago when there was an early retirement program for the court, there is in subsection B2, a filing cutoff date of basically today. And essentially, I spoke to Treasurer O'Reilly with respect to this, and he had indicated to me that it did not have to be today. And so what I'm suggesting, this could be read for the first time, but when I bring it back, it gets brought back for the second time, I will amend this to reflect, and correct me if I'm wrong, Treasurer O'Reilly, that the date would end up being June 29, 2017 by 5:00 PM. And, and so that if, if someone wants to elect, because it's not necessarily clear that one of these employees actually wants to end up doing their early retirement, probably is, but might not. So that's all I have to say with regard to.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So that's five yeses and one no. The next item on the agenda, item 13A, Business License Renewal for Dearborn Heights Moose Lodge.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I move to approve the business license renewal application for Dearborn Heights Moose Lodge as outlined in 13A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 13B, Permanent Traffic Control Device and Two Stop Signs Midway at Belmont.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I move council concur with Chief Lee Gavin on the traffic signals for eastbound Midway at Belmont as outlined in 13B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That ends the regular business portion of our meeting. Any announcements from anybody first at the table?
Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
At our last study session, I brought up a fact that a AutoStart was purchased by our ordinance director, and he said he was going to refund the city the money. Has that check been written and received by the city? I asked Mr. Treasurer if he's here? Or our ordinance director?
I'm here, but I, you know, a lot of things go through my office that I, I can't say if it had come through or not.
Can you let me know tomorrow if it's been-
Sure.
-processed, because he promised he would do it the day after. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yeah, I just wanted to share, because I know in a previous meeting, there was a resident who had a question about the Great Lakes Water Authority, the project that's happening along Telegraph, and some of the beautification once the project is complete. So I did speak with somebody from Great Lakes Water Authority who did inform me that they have included the addition of 80 trees that will be added once the project is complete for beautification, but also in addition to that, they are working with MDOT, the Michigan Department of Transportation, their arborist to add additional trees, so we may even have some more along there. So I just wanted to provide that information to everyone, because we did have some folks who had asked about that. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Diane Webb and the council and everyone. I know the situation with Warren Valley, it's, it's complicated, we have some time deadlines. Ideally, Wayne County would continue to operate it as a golf course and it would operate for profit. It looks like it's not happening, so the, the city buying it as opposed to be, being sold off piecemeal or developed is, is, I think, a good idea. Thank you, Commissioner Webb.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
There were some comments made earlier about the same subject matter that have concerned myself, the council members and, and citizens who are, have the right to ask questions and over time, you're going to get them. There is no fixed amount for a due diligence process if you want to do it in a manner that is going to be productive and profitable ultimately for the citizens of Dearborn Heights. That golf course originally was not advertised at the risk of repetition or even sold. It was never advertised as a golf course in, in golfing journals. It was intended to be sold as a development, which according to our liking, as, as demonstrated by the people who came to that meeting that Diane Webb set up several weeks ago. I've been paying attention to the kind of parking situation that we have on weekends during this warm weather. You can't get in to park to play that game. This last weekend, you couldn't get a parking space nor could you get a cart to, to ride, to ride around in to play your game. So it's, it's a crown jewel for the city of Dearborn Heights. The, the vibes were clear and consistent and persistent, I might add, that it was to stay as a golf course in Dearborn Heights. Those actions were taken by the administration of council to accommodate that demand. And let's, let's go forward and enjoy what that crown jewel is going to bring Dearborn Heights in the future. I like to see it as a golf course and banquet hall and country club. Hopefully, when we get to the fine details, we might be able to put that third definition in place so that we who are on small salaries when we retire, we can go to the country club and snap up some Pepsi Cola and chips.
Thank you, thank you. Any other announcements from anybody at the table? Any other announcements?
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
I, I think it is extremely important that through this whole process with the golf course, I don't believe we would have been successful without the great amount of assistance of our Commissioner Diane Webb, and I want to publicly thank you for everything that you did for the people of Dearborn Heights. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Any other announcements? Any department ads or any other announcements? Director McIntyre?
Yeah, I just want to remind folks that we are hosting a, our third annual low-cost pet vaccination clinic. It's going to be Sunday, July 30th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We suggest people get in line around 9:30. Last year vaccinations were $5, rabies were $5. There is some possibility that those rates are going to go up just slightly. It's still a really reasonable cost. Also, that same day, the clerk's office is going to be available to issue animal licenses that day as well. So it's Sunday, July 30th, 2017, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It'll be the regular series vaccination, DHLPP. The rabies virus will be available and Borodotel, microchips are also available that day as well. All right? Oh, right here in front of City Hall. We host it here. MHS brings their staff out and last year we serviced about 460 animals. Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Director Zimmer, do you have a cost for microchipping or is that still being negotiated out? Microchipping, the fee?
You called Zimmer.
Oh, I'm sorry, Director McIntyre, I know who, thank you.
Last year was $10. I'm, I'm not anticipating an increase there, but I won't know those prices for another couple of weeks. They're waiting to find who the vendor's going to be to supply them and that will determine the cost, so I, I don't anticipate it's going to be a, a real big increase though.
All right, thank you.
Any other announcements, Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Council Chairman, and I, and I really got to give you guys, all of you, a lot of credit. I really appreciated your discussion, I appreciated your questions. I appreciated all the due diligence that you put into this. It is a very complicated decision. I'll tell you, I, I don't think it's in the best interest of, of Wayne County to sell it, I never did, and I still don't. But that, that's the way they were headed, and it would have been, it would have been really an environmental disaster for your city and for your residents, and there's no way in the world that we could allow what, what's going on in the South End to, to happen again on the North End. It's just, the, the fact that it was even, even thought of was so short-sighted and, and I'm so very disappointed in, in the county's leadership for even going down that road. But you came through and you really made the best of it, and I do think that it's going to be a great opportunity for the city. It is a jewel. It's absolutely beautiful. I scheduled the last Committee on Public Services that I chair there at the golf course because I wanted the commissioners to come out and see it. It's a lot easier to not care about something you haven't seen, so a picture's worth a thousand words, and I took them on a tour of the golf course so they could actually see it. And they, when they got out on the golf course and they saw the blue herrings and, and they, they just couldn't even believe that they were still in the city, because it's like you're out somewhere in the country and you're right in the middle of the city. So it, it really is going to be a jewel for the, for the city of, of Dearborn Heights. And I just want you to know, I want the residents to know, there's two, two parts to what I want to say. First of all, I want to extend this to you. This agreement will have to come before the county commission for approval. And if there's anything that you didn't feel like you had the, the opportunity to ask while you were, you were going through your due diligence, or as you go through your due diligence, as you continue to learn more, bring those questions to me so I can ask them for you at the table. Okay? I don't want any of your concerns that might come up because, you know, as time goes on, this is a big deal with a lot of moving parts. And as, as you do your due diligence and you learn different things and you look at all the legal things, and this is to you, also to your council, as you go through this process, if there's anything that comes up that you don't feel that you have the opportunity to get an answer to, we, we still have that leverage because they can't do anything without our approval, whether it's sell it to you or sell it to anyone else. So I'm there for you for that. You also will have a second bite at the apple, which was the point that I thought, Council almost called you a commissioner, Councilman Abdullah laid out very nicely, I thought, when he said that, before you do the actual purchase, it will come before you again for that final approval. And at that point, you'll be able to, you'll have that in-between time to, to speak to your residents and hear from your residents. And as you even go through that process, even as you hear from your residents, somebody may come up with a question that you haven't thought of, happens to us all the time, and because people come from so, so many different walks of life and have different experiences that they may think of things that we don't think of. So during that process, I want you to bring me questions. When you talk about losing sleep at night, I tell you, I haven't slept in months soundly. I have an office that is, that is stacked with paperwork like this on this, on this golf course. I have every article that was ever written from historians that are sending me things from all over the state of Michigan. So I tell you, it was a bad, it was a bad situation. There was a lot of things that I think as far as process goes were very improper, but, you know, we were dealt the cards we were dealt, and I think that, that all of you did a great job in making the best of the situation and in the best interest of your, of your constituents and your, our constituents and, and your taxpayers here. So I want to commend you for your work on that. I want to invite you to utilize me as we go through this process. And it is also a very big concern of mine to protect and preserve the land, and I know Councilwoman Hicks Clayton mentioned that on several occasions, and I'm with you on that. That is critical. That is absolutely critical. And, you know, what happens to that property after you are all gone? I mean, you're all doing a great job and we wish you could serve forever, but you're not going to. And so we have to protect that land for years and years to come so that nobody gets in here and, and can, and changes it and sells it off. We have to protect it. So if you, if you weren't able to get those terms in your agreement, then you can bet your bottom dollar, I'm going to be fighting for those terms to the end before, if, if I can do it before we sell it, I'm going to do it before we sell it, because I'm looking for a conservation easement on that floodplain. And, you know, maybe not the entire, the frontage of the entire, but on that floodplain, you got to have a conservation easement on that floodplain. And if the county wouldn't offer it to you, you know, well- And if the county wouldn't offer it to you, you know, then we'll go to bat for you. So I just want to let you know, that's one of my concerns I will be fighting for through this process. And if you have anything else that you want to address, please don't hesitate to call me. Thank you all for your work.
Before you go.
Yeah.
You know, the decision that weighed on me more than anything is I look at it as the county wants to sell it, okay? The counties can't forget that we are the county.
Thank you.
We're the taxpayers. We paid for that for how many years, over and over and over again? And I always hear the words that Councilman Kozinski kept saying, they only offered it to a developer and not to a golfing community. The park belonged to the taxpayers in the beginning.
Exactly right.
And now the taxpayers are paying for it again.
You're exactly right.
And we're going to pay for it again, again, and again. And it just doesn't seem right.
It isn't.
That this park that we also passed, another millage for parks, gets sold from underneath our noses.
You are absolutely right.
As a taxpayer. And I'm not talking as Councilman Muscat. I'm talking about as Ray Muscat. It just drives me crazy when somebody wants to sell something that I already own a part of.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Or they build a stadium with tax dollars and they say, well, look at the great thing that the Ilitches did. Well, you know what? There's a whole lot of millions of dollars of my money went into that, okay, also. So what about the great job that the taxpayers did? So that's how I feel about that.
I couldn't agree with you more. And that's why I started my comment with saying that I think it was wrong. I mean, you passed a millage and 24 days later, they put 255 acres of your park land up for sale. That was a blatant violation of public trust and I'm disgusted with them.
So, you know, how do the citizens want to trust their governments from the federal level on down to this little local level that we have here? Nobody trusts government anymore.
Amen.
We do, we say one thing and do another. That's why it's so hard when for persons like myself, that I want to see something in writing from now on because all of a sudden they say, well, you know, we could do it. I'm the owner. I can do this. I can do that.
And I echo your feelings and your sentiments. I think you're absolutely right on it. I feel exactly the same way about the whole deal. And unfortunately, they haven't been able to justify the money. They haven't utilized the proper process. There are so many, what I would call questionable at best, that happened through this whole process. This whole process has just been, you know, questionable at best. So, you know, it doesn't stop people from doing what they do though. And so you had to respond to what you were dealt and you chose to protect your people, you know, rather than risk them. And, you know, he could have, even if I could have stopped him this time, and I think I got eight votes to stop him this time, I really do, I think I got eight votes to stop him. But because I have debunked every single thing that he said was real, I'm able to prove it financially and every other way. But the thing is, is what's to stop him from letting it go? Letting it go? You know, not taking care of it, not, you know, I mean, we could keep fighting him and keep fighting him. This way, you have this beautiful asset and you can control it. And you can make sure that it survives for generations and generations, and it's beautiful and it's a heck of an amenity. I mean, you think about it, Ray, the people in Dearborn Heights have been paying taxes for that forever. So have the people of all the rest of the other 42 communities.
I know that.
And they don't get it and they don't get to buy it. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, as horrible as it is for you and for us here as taxpayer, you know, for the taxpayers of Dearborn Heights, you're going to walk away with the crown jewel. I mean, for the other 42 communities in Wayne County, they've been paying taxes on it too, and they're not going to walk away with it. They're just going to lose it.
It's a shame that a government entity has to own a business. A government entity should never own any business, period, as far as I'm concerned. Business is for private use.
Right. Well, it's a park and it's part of Heinz Park. And, you know, before I sit down, I want to thank the people from the Friends of the Rouge. Because the Friends of the Rouge have been my greatest allies in this process. They've been disseminating information, they've been holding forums, they have come out publicly in the first time in their existence to take a position on this issue to stop that environmental disaster here in the city. And we really owe them a debt of gratitude. Most of those, half of them don't even live in the city. But they could see what a disaster it would be to see that parkland developed. And they came out and fought for the residents of Dearborn Heights and for that park. And if you haven't, if you've seen the Rouge, if you grew up in these parts and you remember the Rouge when you were a kid, because I remember the Rouge when I was a kid, and it was black. And we used to swing from a tire and jump in it, and I'm surprised my legs haven't rotted off. But, because it was so bad back then. And when we went on this tour, it was so clear, it was so beautiful, you could see the bottom of it. And it was like, that's the work of the Friends of the Rouge. That's $350 million. And, you know, the county stands to lose tons of DNR trust fund grants, hundreds of thousands of dollars. This choice for the county to sell this is not in the county's best interest. It is not, absolutely is not, in their own best interest. But they've made the decision to do it. And that's the hand we were dealt, and you all made the very best of it by protecting it and keeping it an amenity for generations to come.
That's a good point, and I hope you can help us maybe let us know what kind of grants that they qualified for so that we can reapply for those grants because we'd like to preserve that as well.
Yeah, we can work for those DNR grants, you know, and make sure you got a master plan that's filed with the state, DNR, and it's up to date, and we can look for that. But, you know, the reason that they're going to lose money on those is because they qualify for those by the amount of acreage of parkland they have. So the more acreage of parkland you have when you compete for state grants, and those of you who've served, like Bob that served in the state legislature probably know this, the more acreage of parkland you have, the more likely you are to achieve these grants. So they just cut 255 acres of their parkland inventory off, and that's going to cost them, that's going to cost them grants. So, you know, and they don't even know that. They don't even know that. So from so many angles that they didn't see through, this was very short-sighted and not well-thought-out on the county's part whatsoever. And it puts me in this very odd position because I represent, you know, I work at the county and I represent the city of Dearborn Heights. So we have to do what's in the best interest of as many people as we can in this process. And even if we were able to stop them this time, what's to stop them from putting it up for sale as a development in a year from now? What if they look at all the mistakes that I'm going to be able to point out as this, if I was trying to stop that development? If they were able to learn from all those mistakes and put it up for sale in a year from now and correct all their mistakes? And what if all of you people, same people, weren't here in two years from now? You know, it could go very differently and we could lose it. And it could get developed and be an environmental disaster. So, you know, we have an opportunity now. I believe everything happens for a reason, and I think you're all doing the right thing. So I'm there for you if you need me along the way. Please, don't hesitate. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
Hello, Jan Battalow from the Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association. And I just wanted to invite all the residents of Dearborn Heights this Thursday. The doors open at 6:00 p.m. at the Richard Young Center. And we're having a candidate forum for mayoral candidates and city council candidates. And we have, most of the candidates have responded, so we're really looking forward to the forum. So doors open at 6:00 o'clock. We are soliciting questions from anyone that comes in the door until about 6:20. And then we'll start promptly with the mayoral candidates at 6:30 and 7:30 for the city council candidates. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Am I invited?
Yes, you were.
As I received a communication telling me, so I just want to make sure I was hoping I was.
You will receive a response from the board, and we did get your late response, so we are responding to you. So if you just want to check your email, and you'll get it. Thanks.
Steve Roberts, our co-chair for the Watershed Stewards Commission. Good to see you tonight, and thanks for all you do with the Watershed Stewards. Go ahead, Steve.
The 29th of this month, we're having a cleanup of the three rain gardens we have behind, around Richard A. Young Center. I'm asking for anybody that has any gardening skills to, they would like to volunteer to help us teach the National Society kids from Crestwood High School what the difference between a flower and a weed. Sorry.
We have that lady gardener that's there, the...
But we need more help than just that one gardener.
The date again, Steve, is?
The 29th of this month.
The time?
Starts at 9:00.
Time, 9:00 o'clock.
9:00 a.m., thank you.
And it's at the Richard Young Center, and we have the...
We have three rain gardens there.
Honor Society students and hopefully other volunteers to help.
We also will have Home Depot volunteers.
Oh, great. Okay. Well, Steve, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements? All right, hearing none. If any comments or concerns from the residents, please come up to the podium, state your name and the street you live on.
Dr. James Gillum. I live at 4620 South John Daly Street. The city has just, over the years, had come into possession of a house next door, and you finally tore it down and everything. I would like to find out how I could get it for a garage. I live next door to it, need a garage. You've got that property there. I have been mowing the front of it, and the only resident there now is a groundhog. And I took the rest of them off, but they come over and eat our plants. And...
Do you know for certain that the city owns the property?
Yeah, the city owns the property.
Yeah, if you send a letter to my office or after the meeting, see my assistant, we'd be happy to look because we don't want to own the real estate.
Okay.
And if you promise to take care of that groundhog, you got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please come up to the podium and state your name and the street you live on.
My name is Ron Frenzy. I live at 6241 Fairwood, and just have two comments. So far, the city's had about probably four or five months of the new blue trashcans, and they've worked out pretty well, except there's a flaw in their design, which you probably don't know. At the, just imagine, this is a trashcan, and this faces the street. At the bottom, there's a metal rod there, and the metal rod is for the, there's like two hooks to pick it up. Well, the thing is, the metal rod is just pressed in to the pieces of plastic on either side. So what happens is, if it's shaken a lot, the rod comes out, goes in the trash, into the garbage truck, and it makes it just useless. So you may want to consider from the company, ordering like 30 or 40 of those rods because you're going to need them.
Those rods aren't used to pick it up. The arms come around and grab the whole can.
Oh, yeah, there's two, I think there's two different, you're right, I think there's two different kinds. One kind that has a strap...
The only ones I've seen, they wrap around and they pick the entire can up. I think that rod is made, put there to keep the stability of the can.
And mayor, am I correct? We purchased the trash containers from someone other than a GFL, a manufacturer.
We got a 10-year warranty on that.
There was some issues regarding the wheels, and the drivers have been coming out and replacing the wheels, so that's good to know.
Oh, okay. Because I know some of the trash companies in like Wyandotte or other cities, they have the arms that pick it up, and then they shake it and it pops right out.
So maybe that's why that's there, because that design is used in other cities.
I'm sure, that's true, yeah. And then the other, just the other comment is, had an idea how you could save like $30,000 to $50,000, the next couple of weeks, don't repair fairwood. Because if you, even though that sounds a little crazy, because if you repair fairwood with the asphalt, the fellows just put the asphalt on the street, cross their fingers, that cars will pack it down, and then it's me in the spring that has to broom up all that asphalt. And it's usually about, I have to broom it up about every other week, and it's about 40 to 50 pounds a week. And it's difficult to get rid of. So it's better if you keep your money and just do it right where you remove all the asphalt, put all new asphalt down.
I think, Mr. Zimmer, can count, from what I read, they're going to grind the asphalt up and redo it, I believe. No, actually, this process is going to be, they're going to come in and they're going to mill or grind away all the loose stuff. Now, the stuff that we use, we buy it at Ajax. It's a cold patch mix, and it has a lot bigger aggregate. This other stuff is the hot mixed asphalt. So you've got a smaller aggregate. They mill around all the loose stuff. They prep the area with an adhesive, and then they put the hot patch over the top of it, and then they roll it. So it'll be a much better product.
Oh, because I thought you meant that over the next couple of weeks, you're just going to do a temporary...
That is the temporary, what we're talking about, okay?
Oh, what you just said is the temporary one?
That, yes, that is temporary for, until we can get the entire project completed.
Oh, that's good, okay.
I think you'll be, I think you'll be happy with it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Please come up to the podium, state your name and the street you live on.
Hi, my name is Pete Kelly. I live at 26366 Woodward Circle, right by the golf course. My questions are about the golf course. One, is this leasing to, does that mean we, Dearborn Heights is going to own the park you're leasing to Wayne County? Or is Wayne County going to own the park?
Councilman E. I. P. The county will retain ownership of the portion of parcel three that's under the lease, but we will have the right to occupy and control it.
Are they going to, are they going to build on that? Can Wayne County decide to build on it?
I'll show you later.
All right.
This is Woodward Circle. It's this park.
Is that back there?
Yeah.
Okay, then another question is, is that before they were going to sell it to this developer for $1.8 million, and they were going to own the whole golf course, and now we're paying $1.8 million and we're still leasing that one little area?
I think the only, the only reason why that is, is because that's Knoller Bend in there.
Yeah.
And what they said is if anybody decided to build homes on there, they want that portion of the property. They don't want anybody to build on that. But because it has two holes on it, it's part of the golf course. And as long as we retain it as a golf course, it'll always be ours to use for those two holes.
All right. All right, thank you. That's the only two questions I have.
Anyone else? Please come up and state your name and the street you live on.
My name is Rachel Kapilansky. I live at 4469 Gertrude Street. I live on the south end of Dearborn Heights. And I'm here today to talk about a box elder bug infestation. I'm not prepared to talk off the cuff, but I have a letter that I wrote that I wanted to send to the mayor about a year ago. It's dated August 1st, 2016. I'd like to read this, if you would just bear with me.
Go right ahead.
"I frequently walk around my property to make sure everything is okay. About seven weeks ago, about June 16th, I noticed many red bugs, which morph into orange-black bugs on the ground near and climbing on the walls of my brick house. All of this activity was on the south and front side of my property, the sun side. The neighbor next door to me has an accumulation of leaves and seeds and several rotting pieces of wood alongside the fence that separates our properties on the south side of my house. I found many, many of these red bugs in and on those leaves and seeds and rotting wood. Nothing would kill them. When I researched this red bug on the internet, I found that it is called the box elder bug. The bug is almost impossible to kill. It thrives on the seeds and sap of box elder maple trees and other trees. The bugs invade siding, roofing, and can undermine the structure of a building because they multiply in such large numbers." Instantly have a picture, if you don't mind, I'd like to pass it along so you can just get an idea of what I'm talking about. That picture's not of my property, but that's a picture of a box elder bug. It says, "The method of reproduction is similar to cockroaches. The nymphs are so small, they're like the pinpoint, the point of a pin. If you don't know what you're looking for, you would miss them when they're very small. Most bug killers do not work on this bug. There's a special pesticide for getting rid of the box elder bug. However, one simple method of killing the bug is by spraying it with a simple solution of dishwashing soap and water. The problem is, this only works if the spray is applied directly on the bug, bug by bug. The soap solution smothers the bug to death. This is what I have been doing for seven weeks." Now, this is last year. "I've been examining the walls and ground around my house at least a dozen times a day, squirting these bugs wherever I find them. I seem to be getting the situation under control, but I don't know how long it will last. Because the only way to get rid of the infestation is to get rid of their food source. In this case, that appears to be the accumulation of rotting leaves, seeds, and wood in my next-door neighbor..." next door neighbor's yard. I've called this problem to the attention of the neighbor who has the rotting leaves and seeds and wooden planks where the bugs were first found in large numbers. They have done nothing to get rid of this food source. So I've contacted the Dearborn Heights Ordinance Department on three occasions, July 7th, July 14th, and July 28th, for help. The ordinance director, Jack McIntyre, tells me that someone has been out to this address each time. If that is true, then the owners of that property have done nothing to help resolve the problem. Now, it's the following year, and the bugs are back. And back, they're back worse than they were last year. But I've been able to convince the neighbor next door to get rid of the rotting wood, but the bugs are still around. So maybe this is only the tip of the iceberg. Box elder bugs thrive on the sap and seeds of the box elder maple tree and the ash, and ash trees. We have five large trees at the south end of our street. The trees are on the city's property, between the sidewalk and the curb, at 4468, 4476, 4477, 4484, and 4490 Gertrude Street. All these trees appear to be dying. Maybe that's where the box elder bugs are thriving. If so, they will cause an infestation, infestation that will affect other trees and property in the area. There are two ordinances. Ordinance 3330-31, which says, "Public Tree Care Estates. The Department of Public Works shall have the right to plant, trim, spray, preserve, and remove trees, plants, and shrubs within the lines of all streets, as may be necessary to ensure safety. The public service administrator may remove any tree or part thereof which is affected with an injurious fungus, insect, or other pest." There's another ordinance, Section 3332. Private Grounds states, "The public service administrator shall also have the power to enter upon any private grounds in the city to perform an inspection pursuant to Section 3333, in order to be sprayed or otherwise treated any tree or shrub or plant infected or infested by any parasite or insect pest, when it shall be necessary in his opinion to do so. To prevent the breeding or scattering of any parasite or animal pest, to prevent danger to other trees and shrubs, he shall have the power to order the trimming, treating, or removal of any such tree or shrub. I'm bringing this problem to the city's attention because I'm concerned for my property and the well-being of the property of others. The action that needs to be taken is beyond my control. I hope that something can be done before this problem gets out of hand. If the problem is not apparent to the ordinance officer, I'd be more than willing to point out the things I've addressed in this letter." And so I'm asking the city, you know, I'm intimidated. The reason why I don't go to the ordinance department anymore is because, you know, they, when they see me coming, they run the other direction. So I'm coming to the city council and asking you to maybe put in a word, to have the city ordinance department come out there and take a look, and see if there's something that can be done about this problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Can we get a copy of that letter?
Go ahead.
Mr. Zimmer, you and I went out, and there's another, there's a couple more infestations further on the block. And I know, we heard a couple different theories. Do we have, I don't know where Jack is, but, pardon me?
Doctor.
Oh, okay.
Well, we, we still have our tree. Bill, you can send out somebody to look at those trees, correct?
I have, yeah, I have an arborist that we can send out.
But it, it's a huge infestation. She's not the only one. And what, we'll put together a little bit of a task force for you. Please, I know I've got your letter, and what's your phone number on that? If I can get your phone number before you leave, and, but you're not the only one that's having it near that area, because I talked to four or five of your neighbors, and then Mr. Zimmer went out there, and there, you're not, she is not underestimating the problem. I'm telling you, there's a serious problem of infestation on that block.
Yeah, once they, once they get inside the house, you know, the, the, it's almost impossible to get rid of them.
What is she going to do about the problem she has with her neighbor?
Well, no, I was able to convince him to remove that rotting wood.
All right.
And that, that has helped a little bit, but I'm still fighting the pro, I'm still walking around with that squirt bottle every day.
There's a bigger problem on that block, and I, that we weren't able to find immediately. And so, please come up after the meeting, and we'll work on that for you.
We don't want it to turn into a Dutch elders easily.
Get the letter, and I'll, we'll get a copy made of it. If you don't have it in digital form, or if you want to email.
I'll send somebody.
Thank you, thank you.
Some guy planted like three.
Anyone else? Please come up to the podium, state your name and the street you live on.
Patrick Willis, 23440 Hanover. I'm here to talk about my home and the homes on the block for the appraisals and the way that they've been handled. Our house was appraised in November, and the process has started six weeks from then. I've got a three-page letter that I really don't want to read the whole thing.
And everyone on the council has a copy of the letter?
Okay. It was brought up to us on the block by most of the residents that I've talked to, that they didn't know that the appraiser firm was let go, as, from two weeks ago, is when we heard about it, when I believe you guys had a closed session the first of February to decide this.
Well, go, go ahead, and then we'll.
And we have had contact with the mayor's office about the houses, and have not heard anything about this, right? My, our, my house, we had everything, what we thought, in line. You guys voted for the purchase price of the house. We accepted it through Chrissy, and told her that we wanted, wanted to accept it, but we needed time to move our belongings out of the house. We had conversation up until May 16th, asking us, do you, we still have time to close, what have you guys decided? And still, within that communication, did not say anything about getting reappraised. My wife and I thought, because ours was already in motion, that it was going to be continued, and understanding that the rest of the neighborhood was going to get reappraised by this new firm. Questions came up, why? There's a lot of cost concurrence to the residents, flood insurance, monthly insurance, water, gas, taxes as well. I don't know how much longer this, this reappraisal is going to take, but if it's anything like the first one, the appraiser comes out, looks at the house, it gets turned into the process that it did before, that took six weeks or so, before it comes back to you guys. And then it has been made mention through Chrissy, that some of the houses took almost eight months to close, which concurs a large cost out of our pocket when we have got and bought another house to get rid of this house. And so it's, it's like double duty coming out of the bank account. I tried to contact the mayor to ask him what was going on and share this with him. I called him three times, no response. I showed up at his office, sat outside his door after a meeting, was told he was unavailable. I sent Chrissy a note Monday saying.
Yeah, you might, the mayor's assistant, but go ahead.
Right, I sent Chrissy, the mayor's assistant, Chrissy, a note Monday, "Please start the appraisal thing," so we could get it going. I've had no confirmation on that either. So the timing factor of, we were in process, and the concern that they've done all the other houses, I'm not sure where that puts my house on the list, if I'm back at the bottom of the list, which, it really seems unfair. So I, I needed to come here and voice this to you guys, so you knew what was going on. The rules seem to constantly change every time there's a communication. It's not followed by a one-through-seven document. It's one, two, three, we're going to change this rule. Four, five, we're going to step back and change another rule. It's not cast in stone. It's not documented. It seems like it's shot from the hip. So I'm looking for not only support for myself, but if it is a tax thing, that we do it equally for the rest of the residents, too.
Ms. Laszlo?
Just, just to answer one of the things you said, I have not received an email yet. So if you can resend it to me, it, I've checked my spam folder. I check it often. I, I have been in contact with you, and since November, when I explained to you in November, when you did ask for the appraisal, you asked right before Thanksgiving. I explained, with the, the holidays, it's going to take a little longer to get that. It took, it took six weeks. It took six weeks for yours. It takes about three to four weeks with other people. I went before council, not in February, but in May. As soon as I went in May, I called everybody that was pending, all the homeowners I've spoken to personally. So you keep saying you represent, but I don't want to misguide anybody. For you particularly, it's a different situation. There was two other homes that were appraised and were accepted. Yours was not. As soon as I found out that day from the state to see if I could still get yours through, I contacted your wife. I emailed her. Leading up to that time, I was in contact with you to say, "Is everything okay?" Because I knew you had moved, and I was hoping that we could get you on and get you through. I can't do anything. No rules have changed. They are written in stone. They're written in the FEMA big document I have given you on more than one occasion, and I can give it to you again. That's written. I don't make the rules. You don't make the rules. These rules are made and written, and were, I think, since 2012. It's unfortunate that this has happened to you. And again, I went to the state and said, "Please, put him through," and there was two other homes. They did allow the two other homes. They did not allow yours through. There's nothing I can do. There's nothing the mayor can do.
Did they say why they wouldn't let it through?
There was an issue with the appraisal. Exactly what I told you.
Was the appraisal too high, too low? What was the issue?
It had nothing to do with the price. There was a difference in how the appraisal was done. Exactly what I said to you in the email, that nothing's changed. Nothing has changed. You can ask the state, they will tell you the same thing.
Chrissy, just, so with the new appraisal company that we've gone with, which, I mean, I, I know is pretty professional, usually the appraisal can be knocked out in about, you know, five to 10 days. I mean, or is this a different type of appraisal from a traditional one?
They went out a couple weeks ago.
But they should have an answer by now.
Well, not necessarily. I, I made the contact to all of them. I contacted her today. She's still working on them, but she had seven to do right away.
Well, but what I'm asking, is this any different, I mean, the traditional appraisal is done for alone. Same, same type of appraisal, right?
I don't know. I'm assuming, yeah. It's all by the state guy.
Yeah, so it should be, they should be able to knock it out in about 10 days.
Yeah, it's, it's not this long process. The reason why it took six weeks to come before your body was because it was the week before Thanksgiving, and then there was Christmas and New Year's. There was a backup in council meetings, and there was a backup with the appraisal. It's the time he took. As soon as you let me, if you're telling me now verbally, I'll make sure that Jumanji Day contacts you, and if you're telling me now to do the appraisal again, I'll have it done.
I sent the email Monday, and I'll tell you now to go ahead and do it, and I'll ask you how long you think the timeframe's going to be.
I, I don't know.
From start to finish.
I can ask her, and I'll get back to you. I'll ask her, and I'll get back to you.
Would they accept him having an appraisal done on his own?
No.
No, really not.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking, well, just asking.
We can get an appraisal done in a day, but.
I mean, I don't know how the appraisal system works, and, I mean, Councilman Abdullah deals with this every day, and I'm just going to throw something out there. I, I don't know if you know who this appraisal company is.
The new one?
Yeah.
Well, the new one, we agreed on it at a closed session.
Yeah, if you know them personally.
I can make a call, if that's what it is.
I mean, if you make a call yourself and say, "Hey, can you speed this one up?"
What's, what's he at this again?
23440 Hanover.
Okay, consider it done.
I mean, they may just do something for you where they necessarily wouldn't do it for anybody else.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, they've been experience company that's been in the business for a long time, and nothing happens.
Can't hurt.
I'll take that.
No, but the main, you know, I mean, the, another one of the questions that came this, if we got rid of, or voted to get rid of that company in February.
But it wasn't February, though. I, I don't remember the date she said, May. It was pretty close to now. It was, it's very recent. Probably about three meetings ago maximum.
No, it was, it was, not, not to interrupt.
No, I'm saying, I'm talking like.
It was the week before you guys voted on it that May. It was the week before, in May, then you voted on it on the, on.
Two, three weeks ago.
Yeah, it was about two, 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 two or three meetings ago.
Right, and that next day, the Wednesday, I had to wait till you guys voted on it. I went through, and I called all the people it affected. There was still three in question the state was researching. Two of them went through, yours did not, and on that day, I contacted you. Nothing happened in February. There was actually no closed session in February.
You contacted me to tell me what?
I contacted your wife.
To tell her what?
That the state did not accept it.
And is it a fair. Did you do that by phone call, or by email?
No, by email.
If we could talk to the chair. Is it a fair statement to say that the problem with the prior appraiser didn't become apparent until after a little while, and they did some appraisals, and there was some problems?
Yes, but all that was explained, yes.
So, so it was an unforeseen.
I know, we weren't aware.
He's going to take care of it.
Of how it was going to be, it came down. All we know is we had a, the state had, not we had, but the state had a problem with the appraisers. She took the proper steps to get a new appraiser and come to, to us for approval of that new appraiser, and to have everything else redone. But we didn't, I didn't know this was going to cause this kind of a problem. I would, would never even have thought that it would cause a problem or delays.
Not to interrupt, this would, like I explained in that email, there was somebody that went through the process when there was a little glitch with one of the homes back in August of last year, and that's what you're referring to, the eight months. The rest of them were going through fine, and this one was glitched. It took him eight months, because I stayed with that appraiser, thinking it was just a glitch. And then when these others were coming back, I did not, like I explained to council, and like Councilman Muscat explained to you, I did not want to put you through another eight months of reappraising, and reappraising, and reappraising. We're getting a new appraiser. We got a new appraiser. She's doing a new appraisal, and the state will go from that appraisal.
I just don't see why they had trouble with just yours.
And it wasn't just, it was, there was the other ones that didn't go through to council yet. There was five of them that were done right in a row, boom, 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 boom. Before I could even get them to council, the state was kicking them back with that glitch. And that's why I brought to a closed session with council that there was an issue with this appraiser. There was three that were already complete. The two, they re-reviewed, and his, unfortunately, they didn't.
As I understand it, it was a methodology issue. So, you know, that's why there was, over and over again, there was a, there was a problem.
And can you explain, Corporation Council, why something like, the purchase of real estate has to be in closed session, can't be in open session?
Well, this was, Lieutenant, this, this was a contractual issue that essentially, you were getting my opinion with regard to, that was the basis. It wasn't necessarily the purchase, although the purchase would have ended up also being a sufficient basis for it to be closed as well. But that wasn't the basis that.
Right, but it had to be closed. Wasn't, we weren't hiding anything from the.
You, you voted on it in public, though, and that was all in the cover letter, too, that explained there was an issue.
As, as, in a public session, as required.
I, I do know that every time a house has come up for approval, we've approved it right away. I mean, we don't even discuss it. It's just approved. I mean.
Correct.
Why would we hold anybody, no, this council would not hold anybody up. I mean, this is costing you tax money, insurance money, upkeep money. I'm not going to vote against that. That's for sure.
And that's, and going through the process, and that's why council has actually voted on the 23470 property five times, because there were those issues with the appraisal. Council voted on that five times, and yeah, there wasn't a lot of questions from council, because while I'm getting it approved in state, I'm concurrently getting it approved with council to keep it moving along, so.
Like you, like I was, like you told me, if you didn't get my email, I have every one of the ones.
Again, if, if you could.
That's been printed, and I printed each one that's, that's been sent to myself or to my wife.
Okay.
I did not get that last one, like she did not get my last one. Lack of communication, lack of response from the phone calls, from being able to speak to somebody about it, is disconcerting.
Right.
You can't get the attention. The tax, the taxes that you mentioned, I think that we should be able to make them on a month-by-month basis payment until our houses are purchased and the purchase agreement is done.
And again.
They're settled in the title, but you did have that email.
It would be, my thoughts can be prorated.
The proration of the taxes.
The email I sent, not to interrupt, the email I sent to Christine, you responded to immediately. So that was the email I was referring to.
But, yeah, at the council meeting, let's not get into a, you know, back and forth, or, so we, we, we understand, and there's been an explanation of what happened. It may not have been the best.
I know, I don't have any legal legs to stand on to say, "Well, we're going to take your taxes away," or this. your taxes away," or this. I can't do that, even though I wish I could, believe me. But that's something that's, that's got to be done legally, and I think your main concern, if I'm hearing you correctly, is the lack of response you're getting from when you try to contact someone.
Well, we object to that. We think we responded.
Well, I'm, I'm not-
Please don't throw something at us.
No, I'm not throwing, I'm just saying, from what he's saying-
Not really sure when I got a phone call-
No, that's not exactly how I addressed it.
Didn't you get a phone call back or an email or, or even attention at the office when I tried to get it?
We have a three-minute limit, and you're beyond the three minutes, so.
Dave, thank you if you can do that. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come up to the podium, state your name and the street you live on.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support.
Good evening, everyone.